City of Glendale Common Council is now in session. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the city administrator. Please call the roll. Here.
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 Do have two more people to admit and for the waiting room. All right, public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? All right, we'll move on. Consent agenda has two items, adoption of the minutes of our last meeting and the approval of monthly reports. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Don't move.
Move by Doherty. Is there a second? Seconded by Shaw. Any discussion? Okay, without objection, we'll consider the consent agenda approved and move on to our new business. Our new business item tonight, there's just one thing, and that is the review of the 2022 financial audit. I know that we are joined on the Zoom by Jake Lenell from Clifton Larson Allen. He is the CPA who has overseen the City of Glendale audit for 2022. And so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Carl if there's anything you want to add before you, if you want to introduce Jake.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. I'll introduce Jake Lenell. He's with the city's Financial Auditing Service, CLA. They've worked on our past three or four audits, including 21 and 22. So I'll turn it over to Jake to go through the findings of the 2022 financial audit.
Thanks, Carl. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you for having me. Really just have a short presentation here to walk you through the highlights. I know that within your detailed packets, you've got the detailed documents. So if there's anything that you do want to touch on and in more detail, feel free to just stop me as we're going and we can talk through that. But I see that Carl is sharing the slides here, and if you can jump to the next one, Carl. I've got just a real brief agenda here for us today. I really just want to kind of reintroduce the service team here. As Carl mentioned, we've been with the city for three years here, but just want to just kind of touch base on a little bit of the resources that we bring to the audit engagement. I will go through the audit results and then just talk a little bit about audit planning for the future as well. So just as it relates to the service team on the next slide, I've got just a little bit of information around CLA as a whole, and if we can jump to that, Carl. Here, really just want to give you a little bit of background. The offices of CLA specialize in servicing local governments across the country. But we've got a heavy footprint here in Wisconsin as well. So we work with about a quarter of the the total number of municipalities across the state, whether that be in an audit service capacity or in, you know, in a outsourced accounting type role. But really what that expertise allows us to do is kind of bring some of that best practices perspective as it relates to, you know, completing our audit and being efficient and effective with our time and with your staff's time. But also just from an operational standpoint, when you're going through changes, when you're experiencing some some of the kind of new things that challenge municipalities, we like to be as much of a resource as we can in terms of working through that. And then just individually on the next slide, I've got some information just both on myself as well as the senior on the engagement. You can see we both have dedicated our careers to working with municipalities. My specific expertise is heavily focused in the audit realm, which is what we're talking about here today. But as we bring other service experts as it relates to different offerings, I want you to know that we can be a resource to the city as needed there as well. Albeit, we do have to be careful in that we are your independent auditors. And so the work that we do really needs to be able to preserve that independence relationship. So, you know, there's times when we can work through some things and we have in the past as well in terms of assistance with with specific, specific needs of the city. Albeit, we need to maintain that that independence overall. And then really that with that kind of backdrop to the services that we provide and the really the the structure of CLA, I just want to touch base on the results of the audit that we performed here. So as Carl mentioned, this is the 1231 2022 audit. So this is the city's basically third audit in 12 months or second audit in six months. Usually these are an annual basis, but we are in catch-up mode here and, you know, happy to be here today presenting the 22 audit, knowing that this officially gets you essentially caught up with your outstanding audits and that going into the 2024 calendar year, we can begin to plan with your management team on a more typical audit timeline to present the 2023 information in a little bit more timely fashion. So, you know, as it relates to the audit opinion that's included in the draft financial statements that you have in hand, that opinion is an unmodified opinion, what's commonly referred to as a clean opinion. So that's the highest level of assurance that we as your auditors can provide you that those financial statements are free of any material misstatement. So, you know, as we're going through and as that information is included in future bond offerings, those types of things, that's important to know that you have that high level of assurance included in the audit opinion. Also, what's included in that disclosure is that new accounting standards were required for 2022. That was focused on your, any types of lease relationships that the city would have in place that elevated to that level of disclosure. We were able to work with your management team to to ensure that those contracts and those types of sorry, this is back a couple of slides back here, Carl. Yes, right there. GASB 87 is what this is related to as it relates to the leases that were implemented. There was not an impact to the financial statements as it related to reviewing those new standards. But we were able to go through that. That's something that we've been reporting on the past couple of years that it was coming down the pipe. And so we just wanted to kind of close the loop on that to say that standard was effectively implemented. Your management team worked with us to evaluate any potential contracts that would fall under those disclosure requirements. And that has been implemented. So I just want you to be aware of that. In addition to new standards, we also disclose accounting estimates that are involved in preparing those financial statements. So we've got the most significant estimates here listed. When we're performing our audit work around those estimates that that your management team has developed, we're really reviewing that information to see that it's consistent with what we'd expect to see with the industry, with municipal reporting as a whole and what your your individual experience has been as well to make sure that there isn't something that's unique or particularly sensitive around those estimates as it relates to the city. And we had no findings or corrections as it relates to that. And then moving forward into the disclosures as well as our audit adjustments, I did just want to make note here that as it relates to your disclosures, there's really no particularly sensitive disclosures, things that are lacking any type of authoritative guidance or anything like that. So that's good. That means that the disclosures that you have in your financial statements are consistent. They're they're consistent with what we'd expect to see, not only year over year for the city, but also with, you know, kind of that overall municipal reporting environment. And then included in our governance letter is a section related to misstatements. And really what that means is for any types of audit entries that were included after the the audit process began. So some of these are essentially, you know, closed entries that are happening while the audit is in place, we include those within our letter so that you're aware of, you know, any of those kind of late, late adjustments to the financial statements. Those have all been included into your ledger. They've been included in the reports. So everything is consistent and in sync in terms of the internal and external reporting. What these really represent is essentially some of those year-end close items, the things that happen just once a year to be able to report these balances consistently with GAAP as of the end of that year, really to be able to draw the line in the sand for where where the reporting includes all of the activity, including accruals and estimates as of that December 31st, 2022 timeframe. So I wouldn't say that listing is very long in terms of those entries, but just want you to be aware that we do include those as part of that process. So you're so you're aware of those things that happen kind of after the fact. And then just to kind of finish out the governance letter here, the there were no disagreements incurred during the audit with the management team, anything like that. The the consultations related to other accountants, you do have some interim assistance being provided by contractors, but that's not really in relation to the consultation in terms of a difference of opinion around how to handle something. This is really more to help you get through the closed process with areas that as your independent auditors, we can't assist in. So just being aware that you do have that, those relationships there that are helping you get through that closed process. But, you know, that's not something that we consider to be, you know, consultations around these these technical matters where there'd be a disagreement or anything like that in place. And then finally, just as it relates to not necessarily required governance communications, but things that we talked through with your management team and things that we're we're looking to continue to build upon. Both of these items that we disclosed in our management letter in the past continue to be reported, although what I would do want to share is that we're seeing some some progress as it relates to this. So the first is really focused on the timeliness of the financial close process and the preparation of the financial statements. So as I noted, there are some closed entries that happened pretty late in the process. And as you're continuing to clean up the the financial reporting and really just kind of catch up with your audit, your typical audit timeline, we're seeing that continued progress. And so as I mentioned before, your third audit in 12 months, your second audit in six months, the timeline is obviously compressing and you're getting caught up. And as you move into 2024, to keep that continued pace to where you're actually reporting on what you you kind of typically see. And usually that, you know, that, you know, process, that closed process, there can be, you know, a few months that that is held open for, especially as it relates to some of the more significant contracts that you have in place and really making sure that you're capturing all of the the estimates involved in some of that information. But really kind of targeting that, you know, end of the second quarter type timeframe to be able to present final information and really kind of being more consistent with what what you've seen in the past. So and then in addition to that, you know, we've noted that you have had some turnover in the various positions throughout throughout the year that was under audit, you know, as you look at 2022 being, you know, almost over a year ago now. But, you know, during that period, you have vacancies and and, you know, people kind of covering each other for those duties as you're as you're moving through the process. You know, as you're kind of stabilizing staffing and continuing to train people into in their new positions and and really kind of get that department back to fully staffed and fully, fully integrated with one another, that that just continues to be something to be aware of as you're putting these duties in place and cross-training one another, you want to maintain that segregation of duties. So while both of these topics were mentioned in the past, they continue to progress. And I think they're still relevant, but it's good to see that they're they're kind of front of mind as you're continuing to move through the the progress and the the timeliness of the audits. And that's really kind of the summary for the 2022 information. I did just put together a couple of thoughts, just looking forward into 2023 of some of the things to be aware of that are going to impact the city more so than what have happened in the past. So similar to last year, as it relates to the leases that were reviewed and implemented, there is a new standard that will be required to be implemented for all municipalities in the state. Focus specifically on software arrangements. So it's really when you have these long-term subscriptions and, you know, while a lot of times your mind immediately goes to like computer software, those types of things, we're finding that there are subscriptions that are built into a lot of different arrangements. So it does take a little bit to continue to review that information. That will be something that as from an audit planning perspective, will need to be out in front with your with your management team again, similar to to the lease compliance standards. And then as it relates to ARPA funding, just continued focus on the funding levels as it relates to when those grant compliance procedures can trigger. So that really is just based on the timing of costs and reimbursement from the federal government for any of the COVID funds and specifically the fiscal recovery funds and when those will be used. So we do continue to keep an eye on that, working through that with the reporting with your your team to know if it does trigger any additional grant compliance procedures, what that entails and how we can most efficiently tackle that to be to be in good standing with the federal government around those dollars. So those are, those are really kind of the forward-looking things as we talk through what can impact. You know, looking into 2023 and kind of maintaining that that pace of of completion and being able to really be fully caught up there in the 2023 audit year. And that's really the the information that I I wanted to kind of highlight from the detailed documents that were provided as part of your your packet. I do have my contact information here, you know, if if something does kind of come to mind after the fact and you'd like to reach out and talk through something, I feel free to reach out directly. I, that's my direct phone and email address. But if there's some questions that you have now, I'm happy to take those as well.
Alderman Doherty.
Thanks, Jake. Thanks for staying with us during a difficult audit time. Your questions or your guidance that you had some comments on talking about the timeliness, what would you expect to be a good target for us to have next year to have 23 done? Is that May or is that?
Yeah, I would say, you know, my first step would would be to say to be totally done by July 31st would be a great first step there because that is what for larger municipalities, what the state actually requires. You guys are actually below that population requirement, so it doesn't apply to you. But from when you think of it from like kind of a industry-type standard, I would say July 31st is like to be signed, sealed and delivered, you're now in compliance with what as a state you do. What I'd say beyond that is June 30th is what the GFWA recommends as being a best practice. So while July 31st is what the state requires with your, if you're large, June 30th is what the Government Finance Officers Association or the Industry Association would recommend as being kind of a best practice and what they, what they ask you to do if you participate in their Certificate of Excellence program. So I think, you know, maybe if if a baby, I want to say a baby step because, you know, it would be five months earlier would be July 31st. I would see that as being a very good step in the right direction. Think an ultimate goal of being done before June 30 would be would be even better. And really what that does mean though is from a timing, and we talked about this a little bit with your management team already, just in terms of kind of coordinating efforts. We got to build it around the closed process because for the audit to be done by July, the the prep and the the information needs to be complete, you know, a couple of months before that, so that it allows for all of the reviews and the testing and the digging into the support and that kind of stuff that needs to occur. So it does take some coordination. It's certainly not a one-sided equation. But, you know, if you were in a strong financial close process by the end of April, you're really setting yourself up for those improved timelines.
Yeah, that that sounds excellent. And I guess, Carl, is that something we can target and talk about next year as we're heading through the process?
Yeah, absolutely. Jake and I spoke earlier this week and earlier to actually earlier today regarding completing a schedule for 2020, in 2024 for the 2023 audit to try to hopefully be substantially complete by May 1st. So we were going to try to establish the schedule to ensure we are, at least from the city's perspective, have provided CLA everything that we have in our ability by May 1st so that they can move on and get done by those timelines.
Maybe if next year by like March 1, you could start giving us an update every meeting of just how you, how's it going?
Yep, absolutely. It's a great idea.
Appreciate that. Then the other point was on segregation of duties, it's always been a bit of a challenge. We're not a huge city, so I know that's going to be a natural problem. But I think we're positioned to do better for next year. And I guess I'd like to kind of maybe see same thing. Could we talk about as we get to six, three, four months from now anyway? What is their plan and how are we implementing so that we'd hopefully at least that comment would show radical improvement may still be there, but it would be, we'd be more, you know, more in compliance.
Yeah, that's a great point. And Jake and I also discussed earlier today the idea of being segregated and that our new financial setup with the promotions and the hiring of the new people to the positions to set up a framework to ensure that the segregation of duties do occur. Primarily what we focused on is payroll and accounts payable are the two biggest items, correct if I'm wrong on that, Jake? And we've tried to ensure or we are ensuring in the process of training the employees on those tasks to ensure the segregation of duties is in place. And if we can get that by January 1st, then we're in good shape.
Excellent. Again, it's great to be in the right year. So thanks.
Alderman Gelhard.
Actually, Jim Doherty's questions actually addressed the two points that I wanted to ask about. So I think that those things have been handled quite well. I do want to ask, there was something identified as a non-current liability due within one year was identified as, you know, an amount of $4,693,074. Is that this balloon payment that's that's due that we have heard about?
Yeah, that's likely your, for across all of your bonds, you have a portion that'll be due within a year. So when you take that cumulative total across all, that the portion that's due during 2024, that'll be funded through your debt service levy is what's reported in that due within one year line. So it's not just one specific debt payment, but it's really the collection of all debt payments due in calendar year 2020, I'm sorry, calendar year 2023 is what's shown at the end of 2022.
And Jake, that includes the general fund obligation as well as the proprietary utility funds, correct?
There is a, we do disclose both separately as well as in the total. So I'm jumping to the to the section of the report that lists those amounts here. And the 4.69 million is related to your your debt service fund expenditures and really any of your governmental levy-based debt service. And then there's an additional 1.56 million in the proprietary funds, which is water sewer. That is also in one year.
I think that that number, Johnny, I can see in your face looks probably sounds higher than what you think it should be. I think about a million and eight of that is TIF increment. Is that correct, Jake?
For the TIF portion, I don't know if I have that split out. It does include the TIF portions. I don't have handy the specific amount tied to the TIF.
I know the mayor and I were reviewing that last week. I believe it was about 1.8 million of that 4.6 is TIF increment. That's not all levied on a property tax.
That's all I have. Any other questions for our auditor? I can't see all of you, so if there is somebody raising their hand, just go ahead and unmute. I can only see four of you down the side of the sidebar here, so. All right. Well, Jake, thank you so much. We really appreciate all the work you've done with the City of Glendale, helping us get caught up on our audits and really pleased with the report you presented to us tonight. I'm glad to see that we're moving in the right direction and that the staff are being trained on on how to be prepared for the 2023 audit here in the next couple of, I guess, probably what, six or eight weeks? We'll be wrapping up the year and starting into the next year. So there's no other questions. I would like to ask for a motion from the council to place the audit for 2022 on file.
Don't move.
Don't move.
Move by Doherty, seconded by Gelhard. Any discussion?
I just would like to say thank you to our new accountant that did a lot of work to help get this done. I think she did a great job. So and the accounting staff that helped her or the firm that helped her.
Yeah, thank you. And Jalen's on the call tonight. I can, I can honestly say I do drive by here even when I'm not at work and she is here most nights late trying to finalize the audit and do another thing. So she stepped up a lot to make sure that this got done when it got done.
Absolutely.
It's definitely come a long way. So that's that falls on not just the auditors, but the support team. So thank you.
All right. All those in favor placing the 2022 audit on file, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next is our Commission Committee Board and Staff Reports. I will turn it over first to the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. I just have a couple announcements tonight is the Public Works Crew did a fantastic job this year with all the leaves in the city. There's, there's a lot of them out there. They spent today trying to finish up the rest of the city just to try to grab the rest of the piles that are out there, which they were on target to do. If you have any constituents or you see any leaf piles out there, please give us your, the address and we will make sure that those get picked up. And we want to do that obviously before it snows more than it already did. Another announcement is we've switched fuel fleet providers. We had a card with BP where we were only allowed to fill up all our public works and police vehicles with BP. We've switched to the state bid program to help, one, bring our costs down, but two, to expand the places where we can get fuel if we're out of town, going to a training or something, it gives more opportunities to fill up than just the BP station. The final thing I have is the last meeting of the year for the common council is December 11th, which is a couple Mondays from now.
Thank you. City Clerk, Megan, do you have anything? All right, we'll go around then. Alderman Vukovich.
I just wanted to thank the council for allowing me to attend the National League of Cities. I will not be going to Miami next year, so this is an opportunity for somebody else to 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 go. Learned a lot. I'll be sharing some of the information that I learned with the city administrator or seeing if we can implement some of the stuff that I've learned. So I thank you for allowing me to go, but that will be the last one I go to for a couple of years.
Thank you. Alderman Doherty.
Nothing to report tonight.
Alderman Gelhard.
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Bailey.
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Schmelzling.
Nothing here.
Alderman Shaw.
Nothing to report.
All right, I just have a couple of quick things. I have had a number of residents reach out to me, residents in the fourth, in the first district adjacent to where the I-43 expansion from Capitol to Hampton is wrapping up, complaining of a huge increase in noise. So I would like to ask for an item on the next agenda that we ask the folks from the DOT to join us and explain to us how they're going to fix the noise problem since they won't put up a wall on the east side of the freeway, separating Port Washington Road from the freeway. Yes, ma'am.
I would also talk to, what's his name? What's the public works gentleman? I can't think of it.
Charlie.
Charlie. We did bring this up a while. We did bring this up a while ago in regards to the the noise. Charlie has some back and forth with them, so it might be able to be beneficial to to work on that, so if you, I'm just letting you know, because we have been in discussions back and forth with me, Charlie and the Department of Transportation.
Yep, thank you, appreciate that, I've actually had a number of interactions with the folks from the DOT as well, I just don't like the answer they're giving. So I had a complaint from somebody the other day from Whitefish Bay, I was actually standing at the CVS parking lot, which is what, eight blocks, nine blocks from the freeway, and I could hear the freeways if I was standing next to it. So there's something about the way the sound is traveling and it's traveling even all the way into the neighboring village, so I I would like to hear from the DOT what they plan to do to rectify that situation. So and then I also attended the National League of Cities, and I would say I went to a number of really interesting sessions, one of which I'm going to sit down and work, talk with the chief about. But one of the coolest things, I got to ride in a driverless autonomous taxi. It was really cool. And what about three mile route, they were programmed routes, so you basically signed up for a time, you showed up and then they put you in this thing and it drove you around part of downtown Atlanta. I'm not sure I'm ready for those in Glendale, but it was really cool to be in a car that there was like something out of a sci-fi movie, so so tho- those are the two things I wanted to report on tonight, and with nothing else, any announcements or anything? All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll move.
Move by Bailey?
Second.
Seconded by Shaw and Vukovich. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Oppose, no? We stand adjourned, thank you all.
Mayor?
Hi everybody.
Mayor, one more thing, did you other woman Shaw her her gift?
I did. All right, thanks everyone.